Hello, hello, how you doing? Great, great, great. I'm Brandon Moss with the planning department. I'll be, I'm the lead planner on this project from the city standpoint. My backup will be a soul. So we'll be going kind of back and forth since I have more than one amendment. And so between this one in, in A, so are there any, I guess outstanding questions that the city may can assist and help, I'll be right here.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin King, I'm the applicant on for the Fairview Drive MTFP amendment. I'll go ahead and start giving my presentation if people hop in later, I can take a pause and catch them up or just restart at a different point, but let me go ahead and share my screen and I have a presentation to show, give me one second. Sorry about that, I had it pulled up and it got closed.
No worries, take your time.
Sorry about that, I had it pulled up and it got closed.
No worries, take your time.
Okay, can everyone see my screen? Okay, if, if everyone can see my screen, I'm, today I'm going to be discussing the Fairview Drive MTFP amendment. This tract is located in the far, far north of central Houston in Montgomery County at the edge of Houston's ETJ, to the west is Interstate 45 and to the south is the Grand Parkway. Okay, and I might go to the next slide and I do apologize if there's a lag between the slides. If what I'm talking about doesn't match up with the slide, just let me know and I can go back. So the subject request is to realign an unnamed major collector between Rayford Road to the south, which is a major thoroughfare and Robinson Road to the north. Zooming out, we can see at the edge of Houston's ETJ, the the lines to represent the major thoroughfares are in red and blue and to the north, which is Montgomery County's jurisdiction, you can see that their thoroughfare plan is represented by purple and orange dots. There's this existing grid that is very strong in this area, you have Interstate 45 to the west, you have Imperial Boulevard to the east, Rayford Road to the south and Kendall Ridge and Robinson Road are both to the north. So looking at the next slide, we zoom in a little bit closer to our amendment. The current alignment is shown on the right-hand side, there are circles that have Xs through them and our proposed realignment is seen on the left-hand side with circles with, with dots in them. Our proposed realignment brings Fairview Drive a little bit more to the left and it will also contain Fairview Drive entirely within our subject tract. And the subject tract is seen in red on this slide and it's made of multiple tracks that are held by common ownership. So taking a little bit of a closer look at the existing alignment of Fairview Drive, the current alignment proposes that Fairview Drive kind of picks up where there's an existing forestry drive to the north, we're proposing to maintain that alignment, but once we hit the beginning of our, our subject tract, we're going to align it a little bit more to the south just to contain it completely within our tract and additionally, we'll be intersecting this pipeline at more of a perpendicular angle, which is more efficient and more beneficial when you're crossing pipeline easements. By shifting the alignment over completely within our subject tract, the major thoroughfare will no longer be impacting the neighboring residents. Or the neighboring property owners, should I say. So taking a look further to the south, we can look at the alignment, the current alignment for Fairview Drive. Currently, it is proposed that Fairview Drive lines up with an existing road, which is called Foster Lane. Foster Lane is a private road that kind of legally acts more as a driveway. A few residential and a few commercial tracks take access from, from Foster Lane. With the current alignment, if Fairview Drive were ever to, to develop with its current alignment along Foster Lane, those property owners would have to develop their land and dedicate right-of-way for the road to get built, alternatively, the city or county could condemn the land and use that for to, to build the right-of-way, but with our proposed realignment, Fairview Drive would go completely within one subject tract. This would just have one owner that is responsible for developing the right-of-way. Additionally, to the east, there's an existing signalized intersection on Genova Road and the current alignment has Fairview Drive and Genova, Genova, Geneva Drive, I'm sorry, approximately 500 feet apart. Ideally, having intersections specifically signalized intersections that close together isn't ideal just from a traffic safety standpoint. So our proposed realignment is to, to shift the road further away from that intersection. So in conclusion, we are requesting to realign this collector street, which is Fairview Drive. By realigning it, it'll fall entirely within one site, the subject site seen in red. And this connection can be made at the, but by one developer as opposed to multiple property owners developing their land. Okay, so just in conclusion, this is kind of a summary table. The collector in question is Fairview Drive, it is currently a major collector, we're not proposing to reclassify it, so it'll remain a major collector. We're just proposing to slightly realign it. Okay, and I'm here if you have any questions.
I have a quick question, you said that's Fairview Drive, but it looks like it's going to run into forestry. Why would you, why would they rename, would they rename it forestry afterward or anything like that or?
So Fairview Drive is how it's listed on the Montgomery County Major Thoroughfare Plan. The city of Houston doesn't have a name for it, it's just an unnamed collector on the city of Houston's records. But Montgomery County, they, they label it as as Fairview Drive, so we're just using the labels from Montgomery County, I think it would be Montgomery County's. It, it would be up to them if they wanted to call it something different on their major thoroughfare plan.
Do you mind, I thank you for the question, Caitlin, real quick, can we get your name, first name, last name for the record, sir? We just have a number here.
Oh, it's John Dyring, D Y R I N G.
Thank you so much, you're appreciated.
Sure, sorry, I came in, but I didn't realize I had all kinds of goofy numbers here, so.
No, no worries, no worries at all, we appreciate you tapping in, next we have, you good to go?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure you got to, you, you're good to go, all right, next we have Richard Beddingfield.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so is this, is this meeting just to, for the basic realignment or is it to oppose the road, want the road, what is, what's this meeting for?
Um, so there's no action at this meeting and Brandon feel free to chime in, I think it's just kind of a time for the neighboring residents to ask any questions, voice any concerns, anything like that. There will be no action made by Planning Commission about any, anything we discussed today.
Right.
Okay, so the section of Forestry Drive that is a private street, how, how is that going to be addressed?
So that it's, it's dictated by Montgomery County, so Montgomery County is the one that set the alignment to go through Forestry Drive to the north, regardless of if we shift our alignment within our subject tract or if the alignment remains, Montgomery County still is requiring that Forestry Drive gets extended, I'm sorry, Fairview Drive gets extended by going through forestry. So I'm not sure exactly how Montgomery County would go about that process.
Okay, so I'm, I'm guessing they would, if it's private and privately owned, part of that street is they would have to take it by eminent domain, I'm guessing?
I would assume, I can't speak in certainty that that portion isn't within our request to realign, so we've kind of just been studying a little bit further south. But I would assume what you're saying is correct.
Okay, so.
I would, I would also, Richard also speak with Montgomery County Commissioner in their, their, their offices to see what future plans that they may have are aligned, it may just be a line on the map and it never comes. Or they may have plans in the future, we just don't know, we can't speak to it at this time.
Well, the, the letter y'all sent out basically says that the developers want to I don't know if fast track's the right word, but speed up this process to get this property developed, so I would imagine.
To the south, to the south, yes, but everything to the north, we can't speak on.
To the south of what? I mean, the blue, the blue line goes right down Forestry Drive.
Okay.
Can you see the screen there, Rich? Can you see the screen? All right.
So the blue lines to the north, especially along forestry, these are dictated by Montgomery County, we are only requesting in this portion right at the, the start, the northern boundary of our subject tract. So these blue dots to the north, this is what Montgomery County has published as their major thoroughfare plan and this is what they, they say well, i- if anyone develops this land, this is how you have to dedicate right-of-way. But our request is just a little bit south, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't develop this portion of the road, we would just develop up until the boundary of the tract.
Okay, so if I have questions on the portion north of your property, I would, they would take those up in Montgomery County, I guess.
Yes, it's, I believe it's precinct three.
Yes.
Three, yeah.
Right, reach out to their offices and see what their plans are with that. Right, reach out to their offices and see what their plans are with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or anything you want me to um go in more detail about?
I do. One more question. Um, the last time we went through this, it went north all the way to Robinson Road. What's the, why did they stop that or what was, do you have any idea what the reasoning for that was?
Um, was that the twenty twenty-two, the the previous cycles amendment?
Yes.
So for the previous amendment, um they were downgrading the the major thoroughfare. So initially, it was a, it was a major thoroughfare and they requested to downgrade it to a major collector. So I think their segment may have been a little bit longer just because they maybe had a larger um a larger scope, but our request is specifically for the portions that affect the subject tract that we're showing. Um, Brandon, feel free. Um, I was, I wasn't a part of that amendment request, so um I'm not sure exactly the ins and outs of their reasonings.
No, you, you said it straight. Yeah, I did also um this one last year as well and uh.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so like you said, it, they wanted to do the full corridor, that full street, um just downgrade the status of it. Um, just to match what Montgomery County already did on our map. It was still red, AKA a major thoroughfare. And so they just want to match um the amendments that Montgomery County did as well, uh just to make sure both maps are always consistent. Um, and so now uh we're coming back to n- now realign, so we've already reclassified it to a smaller or lesser grade and now we're just, um now, uh, an applicant has come forward to realign it and develop it to just south of this road, Richard's Road.
Okay, so would, it would be possible that they would keep, continue that on or do you know, is that just on the back burner or what?
Uh, to my, the northern part to Richard's Road, like up that, I mean, I read it right, up, you know, up the, the other half that we were talking about?
Yeah, that was, that would connect to Robinson Road.
Robinson Road, yes. Yeah, that's, that's another Montgomery County question. I'm sorry to to push you off
Okay.
to another agency, but yeah, anything north of that, we we wouldn't know.
Okay.
Richard, we see your hand up again.
Yes, so is now, is this, is now the time to go on record as affirming or opposing this road or?
Yeah, you have, yes, yeah, this is that time.
Okay, yeah, I want to go on record as opposing. Uh, this is going to draw property values down for those houses in Imperial Oaks there.
Mm-hmm.
And this road goes all the way through. Um, so yeah, thank you.
We appreciate you, Richard. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Caitlin, I'm gonna jump over to the other amendment and I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if and if anyone else doesn't have any questions, um I will still be here. Um, feel free to hang out and if you, if you think of anything you'd like to discuss or share, um just chime in.
Just a quick question. Do you know the owners of these properties, where this road is going through by chance?
Um, the subject tract or any of the adjacent tracks?
The subject tract, the the road that it's going straight through.
Yes, let me, I can share the entity name with with you or if you have specific questions you'd like um to talk to the owner about, I can take your information and pass it along.
Oh, okay, because I know Dow owns that property right behind those houses there along the pipeline. They bought it because of the uh they uh they had uh dec- uh contaminated, uh contaminated underneath the property, so. And I know that they still have some part of that still being cleaned up, so I don't, I don't know if that means anything, but if you know anything about that.
I do not. Um, we're just representing, we're representing more on the planning side, so specifically with the major thoroughfare amendment. But I'll be sure to pass that information along um to the property owner and make sure that they look into that.
Is is the, the property owner uh that's proposing this ru- the road? Or is it a commercial development subdivision, houses, this, or what, what is, what's going there or?
Um, I think it's, it's still in the preliminary. Um, the preliminary plans, a lot of the design will depend on, you know, the placement of this road. Uh, they can't really move for, uh, move any farther with planning um this development until they have a better idea of where this road is going to go, but I think for the most part, it's um commercial development. But again, that's, it's still preliminary. Hi, Richard, I see that you've just jumped in. If you'd like, I can run through the presentation again, um or if you're familiar.
I was, I was just popping in to see if any questions came up for Public Works or if there was anything you needed from Public Works on this. I didn't think so, but I just jump in between meetings to, if nobody has anything for us, great, but if they did.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask um Houston Public Works?
I like that silence. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So um I understand, is, is there another meeting on this coming up too, like July or something?
Um, yes, there will be a meeting in July. Um, the planning staff can, or actually, let me, if you don't mind, let me pull up the website and I can get those dates for you and let you know what those meetings will be.
Right, about, I know when the meetings are, I guess, but I'm, my curiosity is um what more information will you have at that time?
So at the.
This, or I, I'm just, just a question.
So the next steps that um the city has is inter-agency communication, so the city staff will reach out to Montgomery County engineering in the precinct and the two agencies will coordinate and um propose any alternatives. And at that July meeting, um we'll have, it'll be another um open house that will discuss anything that comes out of those discussions, so if the county and the city would like to propose an alternative, um, we would explore those options greater. Um, as of right now, it would just be kind of flushing out the same presentation we have now. But if anything were to come up, come out of the inter-agency coordination, we would use that time to address those concerns and any concerns that we uh receive from the neighboring residents.
Okay, would Montgomery County ever be on one of these meetings or is that something we'd have to do separately?
Um, I would have to defer to the planning department on that. I I would assume they, they, they extend the invitation to them, especially since it's in the precinct. But when Brandon pops back, pops back in, um we can ask him what that looks like. All righty, does anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss or run through?
Hi, Brandon. Um, I actually, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Um, when or does Montgomery County, do they get um notification about these meetings and um the upcoming open houses specifically? Yes.
Yes, they, they are notified as well and we also are host, hosting, not hosting, but having um uh inter-agency meetings um that we'll be hosting after the open house. Actually, tomorrow, we have uh, we will have City Houston followed up by uh Harris County, then after that, we'll meet with the other counties. Um, so Montgomery County, so everybody's on the list, uh so they, they are notified when we have meetings and such, but we also hold a special kind of the, you know, side like, hey, this is what we're getting that's happening in your area.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, does that answer your question about um when Montgomery County kind of comes into the conversations?
Yeah, I, I guess. Um, yeah, I was just curious because it seems that some of those questions were referred to Montgomery County. Um, and so they, they choose not to get on these meetings or they just don't think it's relevant at this point? Or I guess you can't answer for them, but just to.
Yeah, I don't think we can answer for the, for them, um but we, we are in coordination with them um every step of the way. Um, but and they can come in and chime in at any point in time. Uh, as soon as the application comes in, we instantly notify them that, hey, we got this application, this amendment um on our map in your area. Um, if you have any early questions, you have anything you want to see in early, you know, early on, you know, they're, they're more welcome. But the beginning part of the process is really to um notify the commission, um the pub, the planning commission and also notify the public. And um and on the back end, we're doing our kind of inter-agency coordination, getting the temperature and seeing how everyone else feels. But from the get-go, as soon as the application come in, they, they are notified and they know when our meetings are.
Okay.
Thank you, Brandon.
No problem, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have any questions or? All righty, if anyone, um, I'll, I'll be on, so if anyone has any questions, um feel free to just uh chime in. If there are any specific exhibits or um maps that I had shown that you'd like to take another look at as well, just let me know and I can um put those back up on the screen.
Yeah, I couldn't even get, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to yell at you, but uh.
No, you're good.
I couldn't even get on the team's meeting for some reason. I don't, I entered that one thing and it just came up as an error. I don't know.
If you, if you'd like, um, you can put your email in the chat and um I can email you the presentation that I'm using um just so you can reference it.
Oh, where's the chat at on this thing?
Oh, it's on.
Oh, you he's down there.
Sorry. Sorry. Um, yeah, if you want to just, if you're comfortable giving your email, um I can, I can send it to you really quickly if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'm ready whenever you are.
It's J D Y R I N G at S B C global dot net.
Okay, it was J D Y R I N G at S B C global dot net.
That's it.
Okay, perfect. I will email it over right now for you.
Okay, thank you. What is your name? I'm sorry.
My name is Caitlin King.
Oh, hi, Caitlin.
Okay, so how's G, how is this one going?
I think it's going well.
Okay, you guys had some um people come in to talk about it and discuss?
Yes, um, I'm the applicant. I gave my presentation. Um, we've just been kind of going back and forth with some questions.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Caitlin, okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to the next meeting, just double checking.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, I just emailed that presentation over, so hopefully you get that shortly. Okay, I see someone else had requested the slides, so I went ahead and emailed those as well.
Uh, to Ronald, uh, the Ronald Ca- Caitlin?
Yes, I I emailed those as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And if, once you get those emails, if you want to take a look at the slides, um and if you have any questions from there, please let me know.
Caitlin, is this yours that you're presenting or?
Yes, I'm applicant.
Sorry, this is Richard Smith. I'm just jumping between all the meetings, trying to see if there was anything that was necessary for Public Works in this or not.
No, Richard, this is in uh Montgomery County.
Right, okay.
Yep.
That's, I thought this, this one was out there, but then I was like, I couldn't remember which one it was, so I didn't have them. Still.
Yeah.
They're all important, so.
You're right, yeah, yeah, we appreciate.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry if you hear my cat in the background.
No worries.
It's not very. This, did um, did everyone get the slides emailed?
The other people, they didn't come back. I think they just got it in the chat.
Okay. Okay.
I got it, Caitlin, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Did you have any questions or want any clarification on any of those slides?
No, I'm good. It's pretty much what was sent out anyway, so.
Okay, perfect. Brandon, are there any other items that I need to hit on or, um, anything else that I need to make sure I'm discussing?
No, you, you are, um, you're right on point.
Okay.
This is right, I, this is the temperature we kind of expected, um, for this one. Um, it was a hot temperature mainly for those, um, on the northern portion of it. Um, but, uh, yeah. So this is right on time. So you're doing, you're doing great.
Perfect. I'll just hang on and if anyone has any questions.
See, we have about, coming up here about another 10 minutes. Um, about two minutes before seven o'clock on the dot, I'll come in, make a quick announcement, say, hey, you know, wrapping up, getting last, whatever, blah, 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 then we'll close out the room.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm good. So thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Charles, how you doing? Welcome in.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Um, I hope I'm, I'm hope I'm in the right spot.
All right, which one are you looking for?
Uh, Fairview Drive unnamed major collector.
Yes, this is the one.
Yeah, I can, I can run through my presentation really quickly. Um, I know we just have a couple of minutes left, but I can run through it super quickly for you if you'd like, or if you have any particular questions.
Yes, I would, you, if you would do that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, let me share my screen really quickly with you. Um, okay, so as you, um, know, we're discussing the Fairview Drive major thoroughfare amendment plan, or thoroughfare amendment request, I'm sorry. Um, this tract is located far north of Houston's ETJ. Um, it's located just west of I forty-five um, and just north of Rayford Road, um, and it's located in Montgomery County.
Okay.
Um, and, and can you see my slides? If, if they're logging or anything, just let me know and I can slow down.
I, I see your, your slide.
Okay, um, so this is just a little bit of a closer view of our request. Um, as you can see, Rayford Road is to the south. Um, and we are requesting to realign Fairview Drive, um, slightly to the left.
I live on Forestry Drive. And my property is adjacent to this property that I guess they're buying.
Okay.
Um, so I'm real concerned, um, how is this gonna affect me?
Yeah, so, um, on my screen right now, the blue dots towards the north, um, overlapping Forestry Drive, that was, um, decided by Montgomery County's, uh, thoroughfare plan. So we aren't, we aren't changing anything to the north of our subject tract. We're only proposing a realignment to the south. Um, you can see on my screen, a, a, a tract that's kind of this reddish orange color. Um, we're not, we're only requesting to amend it in this area. We're not, we're still gonna continue the alignment down Forestry Drive as, um, decided by Montgomery County. We're just, we're requesting to realign it and straighten it up a little bit to the south there. So let me go one slide up and you can kind of see the overview of what we're proposing. So on the right-hand side, these circles with Xs through it are the current alignment, the current proposed alignment. But we're requesting to shift it over to the left just a little bit and it'll kind of straighten up the, um, this portion of Fairview Drive to be like wholly contained within our subject tract.
Okay. So how, how will that affect me? Do you see, uh, at the, um, where it's going over that easement on the,
Mm-hmm.
Just a little bitty thing right there. Well, that's my property.
Okay, is it this triangle piece?
Um.
Let me get a, we have a closer one. This one's a little bit closer.
Yes, this is, this is my house and this is all my property. It's a eleven point eight acres.
Is it this one right here? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't see where you're.
Yes, yes, all of that.
Okay.
All of that is our property.
Okay, so we aren't requesting to put forestry on your property in this portion. Um, we're gonna pick up the alignment where it was decided by Montgomery County. Right here, it follows Forestry Drive and then we're proposing, it'll shift over a little bit closer to your, to your property here. But forestry, uh, Fairview, as it's called, will be contained within our tract, within this red tract right here.
Okay. So y'all have nothing to do with the, taking in that, um, thirty-foot private road that we have there, uh, and making it sixty feet wide?
Um, no, that would be, uh, a discussion you'd need to have with, uh, Montgomery County Precinct Three. So we would only develop on, on our subject tract. Um, how Montgomery County plans to expand the existing roadway, um, would, would be at their discretion.
Okay, doesn't have anything to do with the city of Houston?
Um, no, I, I don't believe so. Um, and Brandon, I believe the ETJ cuts off right in that area, so I, I'm not sure that Houston has jurisdiction along Forestry Drive.
Okay.
Correct.
So that, that would, unfortunately, it would be with the county, um, and we don't have a representative with them on the call right now. Um, so how they're widening that would, um, be at their jurisdiction, or I'm sorry, their, um, discretion.
Okay, so I need to contact the, my city count, I mean, my precinct commissioner.
Yes, they'll be able to help you. Yes, they'll be able to help you with their, their plans for widening that road.
Okay.
That existing road.
That makes sense somewhat.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, it's a little confusing. Um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't impact the existing road. We would, we wouldn't, um, as that exists, as existing and there's, um, no development in our tract on that, that would, that would be the county.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I'll try that there.
Alrighty. Brandon, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Do you mind if we have your first name and last name for the record?
Charles Cook.
Charles Cook, thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
Is there anything else I can help you with?
No, I guess I'll, um, contact them and see what their, their plans to do. Cause when they, when they go in and widen this road and take in our private road and part of our property, and then, then they're gonna charge us to develop that road, I guess they'll have that answer.
Right, you'll have to, you have to speak with Montgomery County on their, on their plans with that.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate.
Really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is Brandon Moses Staff. The time is now seven oh four. This will conclude our meeting. Up, Sharon, we see you popped in. You had any last minute, and last thing words?
No, just wanted to tell you thank you and make sure you turn off the recording in both of your virtual rooms. I know you were stuck in this one and couldn't get to the other one, so thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, we're recording now.